It just makes it crystal clear that the system is under a whole lot of strain. So, what's the plan to tackle these challenges? We've identified the absolute most urgent projects we need to secure Del Rio's water future. And I want to be clear, this isn't some wish list. This is an essential investment in our community's health and its stability. Let's break down what that looks like. To build our resilience against drought, we need a new municipal well. That's about fourteen million dollars. A second well is also critical for reliability at around thirteen million. Then, to prevent a catastrophic failure, we need a full replacement of the Northside Sewer Line, which is estimated at thirty-five million dollars. And finally, we need two million dollars immediately to stabilize that nineteen thirty's spring wall and protect the very source of our water. You know, these projects are about so much more than just pipes and wells. They're about the future of our entire community. That second well, for instance, is a huge part of our commitment to Laughlin Air Force Base. It's about ensuring their water sustainability and really upholding our role as a vital defense community. We know those are significant costs. So that brings us to the most crucial question of all. How do we pay for these projects responsibly? Well, we are pursuing every single funding tool available to minimize the impact on residents. This means things like low-interest loans from the Texas Water Development Board, and some of those even come with principal forgiveness programs, which is fantastic. We're also going after federal and state grants for infrastructure and drought resilience, and we're looking at environmental grants to help protect our natural resources. And just to show you that this strategy works, we've already secured eighteen point five million dollars for the San Felipe Springs Water Treatment Plant Expansion. This project is fully funded through state partnerships, and it's going to increase our water treatment capacity for both the city and for Laughlin Air Force Base. It's a huge win. Now, your voice is absolutely crucial in this process. We've laid out a path forward that is designed to be open, transparent, and accessible, and we really want you to be a part of it. So please, mark these dates on your calendar. Join us for a town hall on December first. Then there's a public hearing and the first vote on December twelfth, and that's followed by the final vote on December sixteenth. We really encourage you to come, ask your questions, and be part of the conversation about our shared water future. And this brings us to our final and really our most important point. Del Rio is at a decisive moment. We're truly at a crossroads. One path leads to proactive investment in our future, and the other, well, the other leads to the very serious consequences of doing nothing. So, we all have to ask ourselves, what is the true cost of an action? Because while these projects do require investment, the alternative is so much more expensive. We're talking about the risk of major system failures, potential public health crises, and significant disruption to our economy. And honestly, that's a price that none of us can afford to pay. Our commitment to you is clear. We will provide accurate information. We will pursue every single funding opportunity out there, and we will work together to protect and build a resilient water future for Del Rio. Let's make the right choice for generations to come. Thank you. You know, when you turn on the tap, you expect clean, reliable water. It's just a given, right? That's a promise we work every single day to deliver. But here's the reality. The infrastructure supporting Del Rio's water system is aging, it's strained, and it's in really urgent need of investment. So, in this explainer, we're going to walk through our most critical needs, take a look at the major projects on the horizon, and talk about the smart funding strategies we're actively pursuing to make it all happen. We're going to cover six key areas today. We'll start with a click note on the process, then dive into our system's core challenges, the essential projects we need, our funding strategy, how you can get involved, and finally, why this is such a decisive moment for our whole community. Okay, so first things first. Let's talk about a recent procedural step. We believe in being completely transparent, so it's really important that we start here. We identified that a required public hearing hadn't actually taken place before some rate changes were proposed. As soon as we realized this, we reverted all bills and issued credits where they were needed. Now that this has been corrected, we're moving forward properly, and that means with full public participation. All right, with that addressed, let's get to the core of the issue. You know, much of Del Rio's water infrastructure is decades old. We're talking about some parts that are nearing a hundred years of service. They've been working hard for a very, very long time. Right now, we're facing three really urgent challenges. First, our spring wall, which was built way back in the nineteen thirties, is literally deteriorating and needs to be stabilized right away. Second, the Northside Sewer Line is at full capacity. If it fails, that's a serious risk to public health and our environment. And looking ahead, projections show that by twenty forty, our demand for water could actually outstrip the amount we're legally allowed to use. These aren't distant problems. They're right here, right now. And the proof is in our daily lives. The fact that our community has been under stage-two water restrictions for more than two years, well, it just makes it crystal clear that the system is under a whole lot of strain. So, what's the plan to tackle these challenges? We've identified the absolute most urgent projects we need to secure Del Rio's water future. And I want to be clear, this isn't some wish list. This is an essential investment in our community's health and its stability. Let's break down what that looks like. To build our resilience against drought, we need a new municipal well. That's about fourteen million dollars. A second well is also critical for reliability at around thirteen million. Then, to prevent a catastrophic failure, we need a full replacement of the Northside Sewer Line, which is estimated at thirty-five million dollars. And finally, we need two million dollars immediately to stabilize that nineteen thirty's spring wall and protect the very source of our water. You know, these projects are about so much more than just pipes and wells. They're about the future of our entire community. That second well, for instance, is a huge part of our commitment to Laughlin Air Force Base. It's about ensuring their water sustainability and really upholding our role as a vital defense community. We know those are significant costs. So that brings us to the most crucial question of all. How do we pay for these projects responsibly? Well, we are pursuing every single funding tool available to minimize the impact on residents. This means things like low-interest loans from the Texas Water Development Board, and some of those even come with principal forgiveness programs, which is fantastic. We're also going after federal and state grants for infrastructure and drought resilience, and we're looking at environmental grants to help protect our natural resources. And just to show you that this strategy works, we've already secured eighteen point five million dollars for the San Felipe Springs Water Treatment Plant Expansion. This project is fully funded through state partnerships, and it's going to increase our water treatment capacity for both the city and for Laughlin Air Force Base. It's a huge win. Now, your voice is absolutely crucial in this process. We've laid out a path forward that is designed to be open, transparent, and accessible, and we really want you to be a part of it. So please, mark these dates on your calendar. Join us for a town hall on December first. Then there's a public hearing and the first vote on December twelfth, and that's followed by the final vote on December sixteenth. We really encourage you to come, ask your questions, and be part of the conversation about our shared water future. And this brings us to our final and really our most important point. Del Rio is at a decisive moment. We're truly at a crossroads. One path leads to proactive investment in our future, and the other, well, the other leads to the very serious consequences of doing nothing. So, we all have to ask ourselves, what is the true cost of an action? Because while these projects do require investment, the alternative is so much more expensive. We're talking about the risk of major system failures, potential public health crises, and significant disruption to our economy. And honestly, that's a price that none of us can afford to pay. Our commitment to you is clear. We will provide accurate information. We will pursue every single funding opportunity out there, and we will work together to protect and build a resilient water future for Del Rio. Let's make the right choice for generations to come. Thank you. You know, when you turn on the tap, you expect clean, reliable water. It's just a given, right? That's a promise we work every single day to deliver. But here's the reality. The infrastructure supporting Del Rio's water system-
It's six-thirty, and we'll go ahead and get this regular city council meeting for Tuesday, November eighteenth of twenty twenty-five. Marty, can we do roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Álvaro Areola.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem James DeRousse.
Here.
Councilman JP Sanchez.
Here.
Councilwoman Ernestina Martínez.
Present.
Councilman Jesús López Junior.
Present.
Councilman Randy Quinones.
Here.
Councilwoman Carmen Gutiérrez.
Present.
Mayor, you do have a quorum.
At this time, can we stand for the pledge allegiance and the pledge allegiance to the Texas flag? And remain standing for the invocation done by Emmanuel Pacheco from Exodus Church of Del Rio.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Seeking wisdom beyond ourselves. In this place where decisions shape our community, let your presence settle over us. Lift every thought above personal agendas and give a vision that transcends our own understanding. Grant clarity to see what truly matters, courage to pursue what is just, and compassion to consider every resident with dignity and care. May your presence guide this meeting. May your wisdom steady every decision, and your grace unite us on purpose in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We are on item number five, public hearing. Action may be taken on these items. Item five A is conducted public hearing for zoning change request number twenty-five dash zero-two by Maria Antoinetta Sánchez. Is requesting a zoning change from single-family and occupation district RSO to local commercial district C dash one. Property description is Blum Edition, block sixty-one, lot five, fourteen oh one railway street.
It's six-thirty-three, and we'll go ahead and open this public hearing for zoning changes request twenty-five dash O two. If anybody wants to come forward to speak in favor or against it, the podium is ready. Give you one minute.
Hello.
Hello, good afternoon. I see a lot of familiar faces. Who are you? On this particular building, we bought it from my husband's garage store, a business, but we found another bigger place and purchased another place. So, this building, you don't have the picture of the building? It's a warehouse, and it was a church. Long time ago, when I started my real estate career, it was like a party. It was for parties. So I said, I can probably do something later with this building. So I put it up for sale, and I found out that it was classified as residential. But really, it's a warehouse. So that's why we're trying to change it to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, it's six-thirty-four, and this public hearing is closed.
Item five AI is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-ninety-eight in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas pursuant to the Del Rio City Charter and applicable state law, rezoning property located at fourteen oh one railway street from single-family and occupations district RSO to local commercial district C dash one within the corporate limits of the City of Del Rio, Texas.
It's six-thirty-five. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Janice or Ivan.
Good evening. My question is, under the recommendation, it says the staff recommends approval, but there's no mention of planning and zoning commission. And that jumped out at me because on the next one, it does mention that it went before planning and zoning. And so I'm wondering, you know, did this go before planning and zoning? And did they have any questions, comments, concerns?
Yes, sir. So it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on November twelfth. They voted three to zero for approval. They had no questions.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other follow-up questions? Not anybody else? No? Okay. I have a motion.
Not yet. Do we need a motion?
Do I have a motion to approve? Ordnance twenty-twenty-five dash-
Motion to approve.
Councilman Quinones, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilman López. Councilman López. Any other questions, concerns? If not, all in favor? You got a stain? Councilman JP abstain?
Okay. Item five B is conducted public hearing for replat number twenty-five dash fourteen by Stephen Homier, P E, representing Heather Rimmer for approval of replat establishing lot one R, fifth railroad edition, out of lots one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and part of alley of fifth railroad addition nine hundred East Gibbs.
It's six-thirty-seven. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing for plat twenty-five dash fourteen. Does anybody want to speak in behalf or against it? If not, it's six-thirty-seven. This public hearing is closed.
Item five BI is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash zero-nine-nine in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas in accordance with state and local laws, approving a replat to establish lot one R, block thirty-six, fifth railroad edition within the City of Del Rio, Valverde County, by combining lots one through seven of block thirty-six, abandoning a portion of a twenty-foot alley and retaining a fifteen-foot utility easement.
Do I have a motion to die? JP, do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Martínez, any questions, concerns? Not? All in favor? Against? None.
Okay, we are on item number six. This is citizens' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak during citizens' comments regarding an item on or off the agenda may do so after registering on the required sign-in sheet prior to the start of the meeting. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Topics of operational concerns shall be directed to the city manager, and comments should not personally attack other speakers.
At this time, we have one individual from the board organization, Patricio Garza.
Good evening, mayor, city council. On December first, you will hold a town hall hearing. This will be separate from, you will hold a town hall regarding the water rate increase. This will be separate from the planned event on December twelfth. Is this correct? Yes? Okay. And if so, the other request is that December twelfth, that the date be changed to the fifteenth for the simple reason that December twelfth is a religious holiday for the majority of Hispanics, and so they will not be able to attend. I mean, if we really want to have a consensus, my recommendation would be to move it to the fifteenth of December for the actual hearing. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I believe there was only one mayor? Just one citizen's comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We will move on to item number seven, informational items. Seven A is mayor council public announcements.
At this time and moment, I would like to take a moment of silence. This past week, we lost one of our past colleagues, Steve Webb, who was also a police officer in the city and was a great man. He always had a vision of growth in our community. So I will ask for a moment of silence for Steve Webb, please. If anybody chooses from the council to say anything else, I think it's pretty tough when we lose one of our colleagues, but yes, sir. Okay. Next item would be city manager's information, Marty?
Correct. Here we go. We will have a town hall meeting regarding utility rates December first at the Baccon Room at the Civic Center at six P M. Please note that this is not the public hearing. The public hearing will be December twelfth unless changed. And that too will be held at the Civic Center. We also have a list of upcoming events. I would like to, is Esme here? Oh, she is. Thank you. Esme, could you speak to some of these events?
Good evening, mayor, city council, Esme Messa, Community Services Director. So this Thursday, November the twentieth, we have a vendor meeting at the golf course at five-thirty. And this is for vendors that want to participate in any of our city events that are December the third, fifth, and twentieth. So on December the third, Wednesday, from five to eight, we'll have our traditional tree lighting at Greenwood Park. We'll have some choral leers. We have the all-district choir from the school district, St. James, and a couple of others that'll be joining us, and Avengers Market. Typically, that's the first Friday in December. However, our parade is getting a lot larger, so we decided to make the tree lighting an event of its own. On Friday, December the fifth, the first Friday, we have our Level Up Christmas Parade. It starts in front of the transportation building on South Ogden and Main, and it goes until Nicholson. After that, anybody that would like to join us at Greenwood Park, we will continue with our Christmas music and our vendor market. And something new is our golf market, our Christmas market from three to seven. On December the twentieth, we'll have that from three to seven, choral leers from six to six-thirty, and we'll be featuring the movie Elf at six-thirty. So bring a chair, blanket, and come join us.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Burkhardt?
I believe we have an upcoming citywide cleanup as well, and that is November 21st. Twenty, I'm sorry. Do I have, 22nd, sorry. And that will be behind Joe Ramos, to the right-hand side of Joe Ramos in the big parking lot.
That's all?
What time does it start, Mr. Burkhardt?
What time? Mr. Chavez?
Time?
I think it's eight? Nine o'clock till? Nine to one? Thank you, sir. You're gonna be working, right?
Okay, we are on item C, utility billing update.
Mr. Burkhardt, Mr. Chavez?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As, you know, trying to make this less confusion, I want to provide just a quick update regarding the utility billing for the month of October. Previously, we had billed the, and this is all residential, just want to make sure everybody's aware that the city has four billing cycles within the residential customers. And the October bills initially went out with increased rates. As we're working towards bringing those back, we went ahead and reversed the October billing and applied that to the residential accounts. We then went ahead and implemented the previous rates and structure to the billing and rebuild or adjusted the bill with those rates and structure in place. So I wanted to provide just a quick comparison as far as what an individual might see on their bill or on their account if they're able to log in and view the account. And I want to use the same examples that I used at a previous city council meeting. And on here, you'll see the first bill, as I mentioned. This was done in October, for the month of October. And I do want to make mention that anybody that made a payment, payment was still applied to the account. And for some, after the result of the reversal and rebilling, some would see a credit on their account. Again, this is if they paid. If an individual hadn't paid prior to the reversal and reapplying, then the individual will then pay the adjusted balance. So looking at this first example here, this individual, again, had water usage of 2,300 for the month of October for water. And this is the bill with the previous rates and previous rate structure. So just want to make you aware that this total bill was 9,336. Again, water portion was 2,541, sewer 1106. Because of the 2,300 and applying the appropriate winter average, this, again, the current bill will now be 9,336. So I wanted to use this example and do a side-by-side comparison of what was previously billed, which you'll see on the left side, which had new rates. And again, it had the tiered structured rates. And then the bottom portion belongs to the sewer. And so under the previous rates that we had applied, this particular bill, again, on the left side, applying the gas, trash, tax, and franchise fees, the previous bill was at 109.07. The one on the right side, again, you'll see that 9,336, which I showed earlier. This particular account would then have a $15.71 credit on the bill. This particular account has already paid, so that will be applied to the account. So once we run the next billing, which is for the month of November, they'll have that credit on the account and plus whatever consumption is being applied for the month of November. And again, that's only if the individual had paid prior to last Friday. Want to show another example, again, that we used previously. Here's a copy of their bill. And this particular account had water consumption of 29,300. And here you can see that the, using the current rates, the current bill for October is now 277.96. And you can see there where it says amount due, that's actually a credit of 108.67. Using the side-by-side comparison, again, the left hand was, were the rates that were applied initially for the month of October. Now with the readjustment, as you can see on the far right, the credit of 108.67. And again, this was used as a comparison just to show how and some accounts are going to be affected. And again, they'll see a credit if they made a payment. If they haven't, then they'll see the readjusted bill for the month of October. The month of November, we will be issuing those out. I believe, again, going back to, we have four cycles. The first two cycles have already been billed. And the third cycle will be billed here on Wednesday, and the fourth, next Wednesday. And that, at that point, everyone should be receiving an updated bill that includes October's adjustment. And moving forward, again, that should then be applied again for the month of December. And so with that, again, just wanted to kind of give a quick update and provide some examples to show either, again, they'll receive a credit if payment has already been made, or they'll have a readjusted balance if payment hasn't been made.
Any questions, Mr. Chavez?
For the month of October, November, December, you're going to be reverting back to the old rates, correct?
And rate structure, that's correct.
And then January 1st, beyond new rates going in?
Should those be adopted? Then, yes.
Mr. Chavez, I've been asked by a person concerned, well, she, her bill was high. She only paid half a bill, not knowing what was going to happen as far as the readjustments and everything. How are they going to be aware to where a credit was given to them after they only paid half of that bill?
Yeah. So any, anyone that made, let's say, partial payment, once, depending on where they land in the cycle, you should be able to see that with the November bill. And just for awareness, anybody could sign on to the city website and view their account online if they want to set up an account so they can actually see real time as far as any balance or any credit that is applied to the account.
Yeah, because some don't have access to online. This person have access, they just come in and pay us to get the bill.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying. So when they go pay the bill, they gave half, the customer service rep will be able to say, this is your new bill, ma'am, you've been given credit, you know, for partial payment.
Yes, and they can always call to get their current balance.
Thank you.
I guess by the next bill, they should already be credited, so this should be right.
Yes. At this point, any adjustment has been applied to the account.
Any other questions for Mr. Chavez? Not?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
We are on item eight, resolutions. Eight A is resolution 2025-198.
I think we're gonna wait on that till we go into executization, then we'll come back out.
All righty. We will move on to eight B, resolution 2025-200, discuss and take action on a resolution authorizing posting and publication. I'm going to, I believe there's new ones on the dais. I'm gonna read the heading. Might not be this one, but. I believe there's new items on the dais. So item eight B is resolution 2025-200, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas authorizing posting and publication of notice of intention to issue City of Del Rio, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed $265,000 and providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion to the dais?
I have a question first. What, I'm sorry.
There is a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now you can ask the question.
What is the difference? Because we just got these, what is the difference between here and what's in the agenda packet?
Mr. Matarca?
Good evening, council, mayor, staff. The only change is the last whereas on the new resolution, where it lists that the city manager is authorized to advertise for requests for proposals for four different items or anything pertaining to the professional services that we would be procuring for these certificates of obligations, for the projects pertaining to the certificates of obligation.
So there's an additional whereas added, and where did that come from?
We need to be able to advertise, starting tomorrow. We'll be bringing a ratification on the December 9th, so it can have its own individual resolution. And then we are planning to award on December 16.
May I share that this is, I believe, series 25A? And this is the portion that we had to defer due to the posting of a 10-year amortization versus a 20-year amortization. This is correcting that issue and also allowing for the RFQ process to be performed for both financial advisors and bond counsel.
Councilman DeRouze?
Thanks for that answer. So there's a perception that the city and the county can't and won't work together? Let's be honest, sometimes we don't, but there are times when we do. And so I'd like to highlight that. I'd like to specifically thank County Commissioner Fernando Garcia. When this came out, and, you know, talked to Mr. Hasso before the meeting, and, you know, got some more details on exactly what happened. You know, we reached out to Commissioner Garcia, and he immediately started making some phone calls to some people that he knew up in Austin from, you know, his experiences prior to being on the county commission, and immediately, you know, got talking with the right people, got connected with people to really help the city out to be able to redo this and avoid some of the potential negative consequences. So really, really want to thank him.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Not?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as amended on our new sheet.
Do I have a second?
Well, actually, I think we already had motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
JP and Tina. But that's okay, you can do the other one.
Maybe.
All right, we have a first and a second. All in favor? Against? Meh.
Item C is resolution 2025-2002, a resolution authorizing posting and publication of a notice of intention to issue City of Del Rio, Texas combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed $590,000 and providing an effective date.
Do I have a motion to the dais? This is.
I have a question. I assume the answer is the exact same, Luis. Okay, so the additional whereas.
Changes.
Same as the first one?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion? You have a comment?
Yes. This is the lead line inventory. Please note, it says replacement, but this is for us, the lead line inventory that will lead us to the point where we can replace those that need to be replaced. This is through the drinking water state revolving loan fund through T W D B. That's all.
Now, I'll ask for a motion, entertain the motion. JP, do I have a second? Councilwoman Gutierrez, any other comments, concerns? If not, all in favor? Against?
Okay. Item D is resolution 2025-203, a resolution of the City of Del Rio, City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 contractor agreement between the City of Del Rio and the Middle Rio Grande Development Council, area agency, and aging for the provisions of nutrition services and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Do I have a motion to the dais?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Martinez, second, my mayor, Paul Timon DeRouze, any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor? I, against?
Item E is resolution 2025-204, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas approving the submission of fiscal year 2025-2026 Uniform Rate Negotiation Budget Workbook to the area agency on aging of the Middle Rio Grande area and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Do I have a motion to the dais? JP, do I have a second? Councilwoman Gutierrez, do we have any questions from the dais? If not, all in favor? Against, none.
Item F is resolution 2025-205, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas ratifying the submission of the HEB, our Texas, our future fiscal year 2025-2026 grant application and authorizing the city manager to ratify and accept the grant submission.
Do I have a motion to the dais?
Motion to accept.
Councilman Lopez, do I have a second? Councilwoman Martinez, any questions, concerns from the dais? You have a couple of presentations?
I just have a quick presentation. And I just wanted to highlight a couple of things because I think this is a huge achievement for the City of Del Rio. And so I just wanted to go over some of those key points. So this is a wildlife and restoration and habitat project. And so Keep Texas Beautiful Plans to Restore, or Keep Del Rio Beautiful, excuse me, plans to restore wildlife, habitat, and native landscapes along San Felipe Creek. The project will restore native habitats through planting, art, and education while engaged in residence to protect wildlife, enhance biodiversity, and foster long-term community stewardship. So in order to apply for this grant, you had to be a Keep Texas Beautiful affiliate, be in a HEB service area, and be a Gold Star, which we are, Silver, or in good standing in 2025. Out of 300 Keep Texas Beautiful affiliates in the state of Texas, we were one of 10 that was selected, and we are one of two in the category for wildlife protection and habitat restoration. And I just wanted to point out a couple of rare, threatened, and endangered species in Del Rio and Valverde County. We have the Proserpent Shiner there on the left, and the Devil's River Minnow. And there is an Endangered Species Act passed in 1967, which helps concern, or helps with protecting these rare, threatened, and endangered species. And we have the Indigo Snake on the left, the Big Ben Blackhead on the right. We have four bats that are threatened and rare in Del Rio, and one of them is the Mexican Long-Nose Bat. And the Mexican Free-Tailed Bat was named the state mammal in Long-Nose Bat, and the Mexican Free-Tailed Bat was named the state mammal in Texas because we have the hu, the biggest bat population in the United States. So, here are four that are endangered, the Mexican Long-Nose Bat, cave myotis, western small-footed myotis, big free-tailed bat, and we have six other bats that were identified in a Devil's River study, and this was done by Texas Parks and Wildlife. And so, those are six other bats that are native to our area, not endangered, but are part of our community, and so we just want to protect our pollinators and remove invasive species.
Thank you, Esme. Any questions to Esme? If not, there's a first and a second. All in favor?
We are now on ordinances. Item nine A is Ordnance 2025-096. This is the second reading on ordinance of City Council of the City of Del Rio authorizing and directing the city manager to approve a five-year contract with Platform Waste Solutions, Inc., to provide residential waste, commercial waste, bulky waste, yard waste, recycle collection, and disposal services. This is the second of the, of three readings.
Do we have any questions? Mrs. Burkhard, or Mr. Chavez? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I've asked several times, which, here, about the compaction. Who is in charge of the compaction? Del Rio in charge of the compaction, or is the, this company?
Platform is in charge of making sure that compaction rate is met. If they don't, by the end of the year, they tell us. They have suggested that this year they may not meet that compaction fully, but they anticipate with the new equipment that they will actually be able to meet that compaction in the next year.
I visit the dump several times.
Yes.
Monthly, and there's numerous tractors that are broke down.
Yes.
And there is no compaction tractor out there, so they can't meet compaction quotas that they need to meet. I want to know what consequences do they have if they don't meet? I mean, previously, these people that were there would just pay some fine and walk away, but obviously, the fine was not severe enough for them to do what they need to do as far as getting the compaction to do what they need to do, because these cells cost us millions of dollars to
Absolutely, to open.
To dig out and to do, and then, when we, they're supposed to last, I don't know, five, 10 years, and we fill them up in three, we're gonna have to go back and do it again. This is poor management. I feel this is poor management, and I can see it happening because I visited. You know, I'm over there in my dump truck dumping trash. So, I'd like more information on this.
Information on that. I can do that.
Please.
By the next meeting, certainly.
By the next meeting, and answers to those questions, and I want to know what the consequences are, and they need to be more severe, and I don't think they should wait till the end of the year. I think it should be quarterly.
Would you, we have Platform here, present.
And maybe he can answer your questions, Councilman Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Administration. Mr. JP Sanchez, as far as the compaction goes, like I stated, one time a year in November, I call engineering company, they come out, they do a flyover, and they calculate our compaction with a flyover as to what mass is there this year and was not there last year. As far as the fine goes, there is a certain life expectancy on each cell. That's what the hole is, the technical term is a cell. So, what they do is a breakdown of whatever, there's a certain cubic yard compaction rate that we're supposed to meet. When we don't meet that, that's how they determine what kind of life we took out of the cell, per se, and they do a breakdown, and that's how we get charged as well, per cubic yard, if we don't meet the compaction rate. No excuses. My side of the story is just went through the bankruptcy with Red River. There was no, at the time, they were already going through a tough time. There was no, no, not one piece of equipment was brought in five years ago when they renewed. Even in the previous contract, they only replaced about 30% of our equipment. So, currently, we're not working with the equipment from the last contract. We're working with the equipment from the previous contract, and some of it even from the very first contract, sorry, in 2009. It's just the condition of our equipment is pretty bad, and most of my job really, instead of being a waste management, is a, I'm a mechanic shop right now, just trying to keep the wheels rolling and trying to keep the trash picked up. As mentioned, with the new equipment, I mean, I've given, I've broken down some numbers, you know, just off the top of my head. We service 20,000 accounts per week. We service 100% of Laughlin Air Force Base. That includes other recycling programs. On a weekly basis, on a very, very bad week, we might get 15 legitimate complaints, and I'm talking about an absolutely horrible week. Our percentage, as far as what we're able to do successfully per week, is pretty good for what we're doing, and like I said, I mentioned before, if we can do that with the rundown equipment right now, just imagine what we can do with some better equipment.
So, when is the likelihood of you receiving this better equipment?
Very, very likely, very likely. We're just, when this is awarded, then we can, we can move forward with purchasing of the equipment. Some of this stuff takes long. I don't know if I'm saying anything, I'm not supposed to hear, but we're not...
Honesty is the best policy, really, you know, and you're being upfront.
Yes.
You're telling us what we need to know, and that's all there is to it. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
But we do see things of concern, or I see things of concern because I'm a big visitor over there to, per se.
Yes, sir.
You know, and I have to agree with you. Yes, there's 15 complaints. It's not bad, you know, especially when you're servicing the whole city, and I don't think it's, the citizens are complaining because you're picking up their trash, you know. It's what I see over there in the actual life of that cell that concerns me, because I could see it filling up, you know. I can actually see it filling up, you know what I'm saying? And when I go over there, it just feels like it's getting higher and higher and higher and higher, a lot quicker than before, and that's what concerns me because I know by sitting here, you know, how much those cells cost to develop, you know?
Correct.
And I don't want this thing to come up too soon because it affects every citizen here, you know. We have to go back to them. If we don't get the full life out of that cell, you know, then we're gonna have to do something drastic with the fees and everything else, and it gets passed on to the consumer, and that's what I don't want to do. We've already, we're already dealing enough with our sewer and water that I don't need to throw the trash on them also. So, you can understand my concern, and that's why I'm asking the questions that I ask. And I do understand construction and whatnot, and equipment and everything else. I understand all that, but the concern is, we need to get that equipment in here so that you can do what you need to do to do your job, you know what I'm saying? And one of it's getting the compactor, you know, the compactor that they had there, it's not, you know, it's not doing its job.
Yes, sir, and that's really the issue is, most people don't know this, but a garbage truck is one of the most expensive trucks that are on the road. Our smallest, cheapest truck is 300,000. I got some commercial silos that are 700,000. You pay 150,000 today, and you do not see that truck until 20 months from now. The same thing with the piece of equipment. It was never replaced at the last renewal, and it's a 1.8, 1.8 million dollar piece of equipment, and the repairs on that are, and this one was just, it's an older model that we got fully refurbished, and we kind of got screwed over on that deal as well, where we suspect, or obviously, it wasn't fully refurbished. It was supposed to last us at least the last three years, so we wouldn't have any issues. I've been here for 15 years, and I'm an MSW Class A license from TCEQ. That means I'm licensed to run any landfill in Texas. I really do care about our landfill, and it really bothers
Thank you, I do too.
When we're sucking up life out of it. What we did, just to kind of ease your mind on the life expectancy, so for one, a few years ago, we changed all our operations. Before us, like Moore Service had never met a compaction rate for the first time, maybe five years ago. Our compaction rate, just to give you numbers, is 1050. For the first time, the average over the last 30 years was about a 700. That goes all the way back to Moore Services days. About five years ago, we changed our operation, and we were able to start hitting, our first year was like a 1380. I think, I believe last year, we were still in the 1100s. What we did to go ahead and try to save the life of the cell is, the cells build with a liner and plumbing underneath it, so in all reality, that very first layer in the bottom, which we were still in up to just a few months ago, or maybe two months ago, you're not allowed to compact down there because you can, you can make, yeah, puncture. So, what we did, since we didn't have a compactor, we just focused on building our fluff layer so that we wouldn't eat up any life. Like I mentioned to administration before, I'll be the first to admit, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna hit that compaction because you don't really want to build your whole fluff layer for that same reason all at once. You know, you want to kind of space that out over the years so that you have a little buffer over every year. We just went ahead and kept on going. As long as that compactor was down, we went ahead and kept building our fluff layer to preserve the cell life. I think we were able to do it, for the most part, and not take anything, but we will have to see, we receive our results in January or February from our flyover. Like I said, we call it in in November. It usually gets done at the beginning of January, and it takes a few weeks for us to get those results.
Okay.
Any other questions from the dais, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Sir, this is the second reading, so I don't think we need a motion or anything.
We did get a motion last week for the first reading, so if we can get one for this one, and also approve to bring it back for the third reading.
Motion? JP, to bring it back to the second, third reading?
Second.
Second. Any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor? I, against? None?
Okay, item B is listed as ordinance 2025-101. It actually should be 093. This is an ordinance correcting ordinance 2025-093 that authorized and directed the city manager to accept the award for $5,950 from fiscal year 2026 Big BG Rifle Resistant Body Armor Grant, number 5098702, program from the Office of the Texas Governor Public Safety Office.
Do I have a motion in the dais?
Motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, second. Councilman Canales, any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor? I, against? None?
Okay, item nine C is Ordnance 2025-109, ordinance by City Council of the City of Del Rio, Texas Ratifying the Acceptance of the Keep Texas Beautiful, Our Texas, Our Future Grant Provided by Keep Texas Beautiful with Funds Received from HEB and Authorizing the City Manager to Accept the Grant Funds.
Do I have a motion in the dais?
Motion.
Councilman JP, do I have a second?
I love my HEB.
Councilwoman Gutierrez, any questions, concerns? If not, all in favor? I, against?
Okay, we are now on the consent agenda. This is the procedure to help facilitate the meeting with the consent agenda. One motion will approve all action items noted as consent. These are routine matters which are repeated on the agenda. Approval means it will be implemented as recommended by the administration. Prior to action on the consent agenda, any council member may have a consent item withdrawn from this portion of the agenda so that it may be discussed prior to action. We have item 10A, which is the approval of minutes for November 5, 2025, special work session meeting, and November 7, 2025, special meeting, and item B, quarterly investment report ending September 30, 2025.
Before I ask for a motion, does any council want, councilwoman, or councilwoman want to remove anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make motion to approve both items.
Mayor Potem DeRusse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Chavez, I'm sorry, sir.
Yes, on the quarterly investment report, we do have Ben from Valley View available. If you want to hear a quick presentation or any questions.
You guys got to review it, or you want the presentation? Go ahead, Mr. Long.
Why not?
Hello, Ben. Oh, no, we can't hear you.
There we go.
Yes, there you go.
Richard?
Good evening, everyone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the quarterly investment report.
Sure. Run it through us.
Good, I'm sorry, we're sure exactly where you were in the agenda. Can I think it's a format you're familiar with? Page one is the key ingredients from the Public Funds Investment Act, the notification that the investment officers believe it to be in compliance with the act and your policies, and then it's signed by Mr. Chavez and Ms. Soto, and then page two is the annual comparison, and that's since it's 12, or excuse me, 9:30, your fiscal year end, and you can see, last year, you were a little bit over 96 million, and this year, you were a little bit over 91 million at September. The big shift is in interest rates as the Fed lowered rates through calendar year 2024, and last year at this time, you were over 5%, and this year, you're a little bit over 4%. Fortunately, your interest income still held in there, a little bit over $5 million last year, and a little bit over $5 million this year. The next page is the quarterly summary that's required by the Public Funds Investment Act. Again, you can see not much change. So, from June, you had about 90 million in portfolio. In September, you had about 91 million. Again, unfortunately, the yield has continued to slide down a little bit during the quarter. You earned almost a million dollars, and that helped accumulate to that 5,300,000 for the fiscal year. Little bit of economic stuff. All this has changed, I can tell you that. Most of you know, we had a government shutdown, and it impacted a bunch of the economic data that could have come out, and so the market has been in a confused state for a while, but the upper left-hand corner of the yield curves, you can see it's very flat. There's anticipation of the Fed continuing to lower short-term rates. In October, they did lower rates one more time, so the current target is 3.75% to 4%. So, unfortunately, the short-term yields that the city has that are above 4%, the September report will be below 4% for the December report as the market incorporates that change in Fed policy. The good news, upper right-hand graph, the stock market continued to do well and have reached new highs. Last day or so, they've had a little bit of an adjustment, but in general, the trend has been very positive for them. If we go down to the next page on their holdings, you can see quite a bit of your money is in Texas Community Bank. They've been paying you a good rate on cash deposits, and I understand you're in the process of a banking RFA right now, so we'll see how their response is to the potential to renew the agreement for another up to five years. And then a few scattered CDs. We're hoping to do a little bit more ladderering as we move forward in anticipation of the Fed reducing rates further. The next page shows a couple of charts and graphs. You can see the big green slot is mostly your cash balances, your DDA balances at Texas Community. Then you've got a little bit in the pools for some diversification, and then a small slice of red there for the CDs. On the upper right-hand corner, you said quite steady growth in the total of your portfolio, and then you peaked last year, and it kind of traded off a little bit since then. The good news is, lower right-hand corner, you've been able to keep up with the yields as the market's gone up and down. Next page is the book value and market value comparison as required by the Public Funds Investment Act. All of the investments that you're involved in, the fair value or market value is the same as book value, so there's not a difference in the columns, other than the fact that it's required to be So there's not a difference in the columns, other than the fact that it's required to be reported by the Public Funds Investment Act. So, um, but it does show you how, how things could potentially change if you did buy securities or something that had some market value, shift to it. Uh, then finally, the last few pages have to deal with fund allocation, again, required by the act. Uh, you see the breakdown between all your different fund types, general fund, special revenue debt service, both for, et, et, et cetera, uh, for September thirty, and then also for, uh, June thirty. So you can do quarter-by-quarter comparison. And that was sort of fast and furious, we can go through anything in more deal, detail as you'd like.
Anybody else want? No, sir, that's great. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Our pleasure.
There is no other, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the consent agenda.
The motions were already made, we just need-
Oh, it's already?
Yes, sir.
Who did it?
Uh, Councilman DeRus and Councilman Sanchez.
Okay. So we got the first and the second, all in favor?
Okay, we are now on executive session, item eleven. The city council will reconvene into regular session upon conclusion of the executive session, and may recall any item posted for executive session for action as necessary. Item eleven A is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven four, parentheses one, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of, of a public officer, employee, city manager. Item B is executive session to discuss and receive advice on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, Attorney Client Consultation, and, um, section five five one point zero seven four, personnel matters regarding complaints and to deliberate the employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city attorney. Item C is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven one, parentheses one, parentheses A of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the city attorney regarding contemplated litigation, civic center rental agreements, and delinquent utility bills. Item D is executive session, covered by section five five one point zero seven one, parentheses one, parentheses A of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the city attorney regarding pending litigation, Paymo Group LLC, DBA The Good Bar, cause number twenty twenty-five dash zero one seven zero dash CIV, in the sixty-third Judicial District of Alverde County, Texas. Item E is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven one, parentheses one, parentheses A of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, consultation with the city attorney regarding pending litigation, cause number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight eight CV, the, Valverde County et al versus Motoya et al, Avenue J. And item F is executive session on matters covered by section five five one point zero seven two of chapter five five one of the Texas Government Code, deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governmental body in negotiations with a third person, purchase of property for drainage.
At seven twenty-seven, this council will go into executive session.
It's 8:46. This council has reconvened from executive sessions. There was no action taken. It's 8:46. This meeting is adjourned.
Nombres de ellos.
Nombres de ellos.
Nombres de ellos.